All right, folks, welcome. It's the top of the hour. We're going to begin. Welcome to the Election Forum of 2025 for USD 489 Board of Education and the Hayes City Commission. We're going to begin with USD 489 Board of Education debate. This debate will run between the candidates here up on the stage. Each candidate has sixty seconds to answer the question. We're going to answer, we're going to begin at the, at the left-hand side of the panel and work our way down. And then for the second question, we'll begin with the second person over and correspondingly. So each of you will have an opportunity to answer a question first. We have sixty seconds to answer the question. And then we also have a thirty-second rebuttal period of time if a candidate is mentioned directly. So if your name is mentioned, you will have thirty seconds to re, to respond to that, to the other candidate's comments. And without further ado, let me just remind you as well, those in the audience, we're still accepting questions from the audience. If you would like to write a question for the USD 489 debate or the Hayes City Commission debate that's happening a little later tonight, please just kind of raise your hand and indicate to one of our American Democracy Project or university student employees. And they'll be happy to give you, I'm sorry, they'll be happy to give you a blank sheet and a pen to write with. So you can write down your question and we should have it up here shortly. And we'll consider that question for the panel members. All right? So let's get started here with the USD 489 Board of Education City Forum debate. Our first question, oh, I'm sorry, let me introduce the candidates first before we begin. That's probably a good idea. Our candidates working from left to right are Kelly Ankar, Ken Brooks, Craig Pallister, Kurt Vajnar, Viner, I'm sorry, my apologies, Kurt Viner, and Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. Yeah? All right, now let's begin with some questions. Our first question tonight, and this one is for, excuse me. I apologize, minute introductions, you're exactly right. So let's do a sixty-minute second introductions for everyone. And we're going to begin with Kelly Ankar with that. And then with the first question, Ken Brooks, you'll start the first question. Okay? My apologies. Let's do introductions here, sixty-second introductions for each candidate, starting with Kelly Ankar. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Ankar, and Hayes has been my home for about, well, more than forty years. I graduated from Fort Hayes State in nineteen ninety-five, seems like a long time ago, with a BSN in nursing. And I continued to raise my four children here while they all attended public schools and private schools, as well as FHSU and NCK Vo-Tech. I'm still connected with the education systems here because I have now grandchildren attending public schools, private schools, and homeschooling, so I kind of have a wide perspective there. I own two small businesses here in town. And between those two businesses, I have around ninety employees. Out of those employees, many are students, some are graduates from Hayes High, and many have children themselves in our schools here. So I'm invested in several ways. I've had some roles in education, working as a clinical instructor and lecturer here at Fort Hayes, and also at Fort Hayes NCK Vo-Tech twice. I'm a good choice for working with members of the school board because I bring in needed.
Time's up, candidate, apologies. Just a reminder, candidates too, I will try to raise both hands for a ten-second warning and I'll try to raise one hand for a five-second warning. So if you want to maybe look over my way, just to give an indication of how much time you have left. Thank you, candidate. And now for again, opening remarks, we have Ken Brooks.
All right, as he said, my name's Ken Brooks. I've been on the school board now the last four years. And I've been in Hayes for almost twenty years now. And during that time, I've raised my three daughters here. My youngest graduated in twenty-two, and I love our school district. I, I'm excited that I got to serve these last four years. Four years ago, when I was up here, I mentioned how I, one of my goals was to pass a bond, and we did that. I wanted to lower our school fees. I wanted to work on teacher retention. And in the last four years, we did, we passed that bond, we built that beautiful new high school. We've done renovations. We have lowered our school fees, elementary by over twenty percent, our middle school and high school by almost fifty percent in the last four years. And I'm proud of the work we've gotten to do, and I hope I can continue to do that for you.
Thank you, sir. And for our next opening remarks, we have Craig Pallister.
Thank you. I am Craig Pallister. I'm running for the USD 489 Board of Education because I believe I have the experience and the knowledge to support public education for our students, teachers, staff, and the Hayes community. I have, if I am elected to the board, I will be thinking, is it good for our students? Because I feel like the number-one priority of a board member is providing an environment for success for all students. I have been on the school board previously for a four-year term. I went to Fort Hayes State. I have a BS in psychology and a master's in educational administration. I was a retired teacher and middle school principal. I, my children went to USD 489. Now I have a grandchild in 489, and I have the time and the interest to be back on the board.
Thank you, sir. And now for continuing opening remarks, Kurt Viner.
I've currently lived in Hayes for thirty-five years, been married for twenty-eight. My wife and I have five children. Two of them have graduated. One was from Fort Hayes State, one was from K-State. I have a, currently a junior at Fort Hayes State, majoring in history education. Our fourth child will graduate from Hayes High this year, and I have a seventh grader. So hopefully, all five of my children will be a K-12 USD 489 product. I have, my two daughters-in-laws are in education. Both of them are named Haley, and both are elementary teachers, so that's kind of interesting. Proud grandpa, and number two is three weeks away, so that's even more exciting. Currently, I'm a business owner. I'm an ag producer. I was thirty-one years in education here in USD 489. I was named Kansas Teacher of the Year, was awarded several ag education awards, that coached several national and state championship teams, and have been on the school board for four years.
Okay, thank you, sir. And let me remind the candidates, please speak directly into the microphone, especially audience members in the back might have some difficult time hearing. So make sure you speak directly into the microphone. We're going to continue with introductory remarks here with Megan Zampiri-Lilpop.
My name is Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. I'm a librarian by education, and currently, I'm the director of client services at a local nonprofit. I have served on the board for, for four years. My son is a recent graduate of Hayes High, and I am continuing to seek service on the board because of the immense value that it's created for our family. I know that as a single mother, I never would have had any of the advantages to purchase or, you know, expand his education that was not available through the public school system. And I'm grateful for Hayes and the community that has continued to support us all. I'm very proud of the work that we've done on the board, including providing free breakfast for the entire district and putting library.
Thank you, candidate. Your time is up. I apologize. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We've finished opening remarks. Let me remind the audience, you can write down your questions, if you have any questions for these panel members. There will be somebody around who will be able to give you a piece of paper and a pen to write with if you just want to indicate that you have a question to ask. Let's move on to some specific questions here. And a candidate who will answer first will be Ken Brooks, okay? Our first question is, what revenue-generating opportunities can the school district explore, such as grants, partnerships, facility use, or other innovative funding sources to help support operations while keeping property taxes as low as possible? Ken Brooks?
Well, I'll tell you, we've had, we've seen as we've finished up the high school this last year, we've seen considerable amount of opportunity to bring in revenue, ads on our signs. And we just, as a board, decided to have a committee put together to decide how we're going to do naming rights, if we're going to do naming rights for football fields, for our classrooms and other ways. And, and I think it's just an incredible opportunity for us to bring in that revenue that will help offset some, some of the other costs. I, I think that as we are building and progressing and finishing this bond project, all we're going to do is see more and more opportunity. One of the things that we are eliminating is costs that we had at Fort Hayes here. It's a, it was a beautiful facility, but we're able to save money by not playing our games here.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Craig Pallister. What revenue-generating opportunities can the school district explore, such as grants, partnerships, facility use, or other innovative funding sources to help support operations while keeping property taxes as low as possible?
I believe all the things you mentioned are being done in our district right now, and they are expanding as the finances and as we need to look at things in the community. Like you said, look at the tax situation. And one of the biggest positives is our foundation. Our foundation for USD 489, we have a, kind of an open house auction that's coming up here later in October. And this draws the community that wants to donate to certain individual items or just wants to make sure that the teachers get grants through the foundation. So one of the most used and one of the best ways to donate, to use the money in the community is through the USD 489 Foundation.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kurt Viner. What revenue-generating opportunities can the school district explore, such as grants, partnerships, facility use, or other innovative funding sources to help support operations while keeping property taxes as low as possible?
I believe there is a great opportunity for grants. I, I wish, I, I hope that soon we have a person on staff that would write for grants. I think there's a lot of opportunities for that at the state and federal level on grants. The other revenue now, because of the new facilities, we have lots of interest in what we would call naming rights. There is a committee formed. I hope it goes from what we're calling naming to maybe more of a sponsorship kind of a deal because I believe these facilities belong to the taxpayers of 49, as well as the students that participate in those facilities. So, but not only naming facilities, I think there's a value in naming activities, as, as that may be for sponsorships as well. Also, as Mr. Pallister indicated, the foundation's done a great job of supporting our school districts. The secure entrances were a big part of their deal, and, and they do a great job as well.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. What revenue-generating opportunities can the school district explore, such as grants, partnerships, facility use, or other innovative funding sources to help support operations while keeping property taxes as low as possible?
Thank you. I think that the public would be quite surprised at how many of our programs are quite predominantly grant-funded. Our early childhood programs are largely federally funded, and that is a grants-writing process that has to be renewed yearly. The, the bond projects were also federally supported with some FEMA funds for shelters. We have an administrative team that has been extremely creative in seeking grant programs and funding solutions, including grants from private foundations to complete some of the elements of the high school's completion, their, their finishings. But I think that we do have some opportunity in creating price sheets so that we can perhaps receive some of the funding back from when we had to pay rent.
Okay, thank you, candidate. And now finally, Kelly Ankar with this first question. What revenue-generating opportunities can the school district explore, such as grants, partnerships, facility use, or other innovative funding sources to help support operations while keeping property taxes as low as possible?
I think we can expand on, on a lot of the things that you've mentioned and that have been set up here already. A full-time grant writer would easily pay for themselves in the revenue that could be generated in that situation. I think consolidating services with the city is a potential option that we should investigate. And that could be anything from HR to IT to transportation to maintenance. I mean, there's, there are several duplication of services that we might be able to coordinate and save not only the city of Hayes some money, but save the school district some money. Business partnerships, I think, could include a version of a work-study program. For instance, in my businesses, in the past, I've, I've worked with Fort Hayes for some of this, with some of the students giving them jobs. And it provided for an opportunity not only coordinate with Fort Hayes, but it provided opportunities to the students that I had working for me. And I think we could incorporate that in the, in the high school setting as well and generate some extra revenue.
Thank you, candidate. Your time is up. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to do the second question here, and we'll begin with Craig Pallister on this question. Do you view the Board of Education as answering to the superintendent or the superintendent answering to the board? First question for Craig Pallister.
I see the superintendent answering to the community and the board and the students and the teachers. And it is, even the size of Hayes, the school district is everybody, for everyone, whether it's a grandparent, a parent, a high school student, or even a middle school student that wants input into the school districts, whether it's new classes or the letting the administration. They may not go straight to the superintendent. They may go to their teacher. They may go to the principal. They may go to a board member. But I think the superintendent answers to everyone in the community, no matter, because it is a Hayes school, and we're proud of our Hayes schools from all the input from the community and the students.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kurt Viner. Do you believe, oh, I'm sorry, do you view the Board of Education as answering to the superintendent or the superintendent answering to the board? Kurt Viner?
Yeah, I think it's a superintendent brings the items to the board. Board discusses them at the, the board meeting, and that's how policies and decisions are made. I, back to Mr. Pallister, there is a, there is a chain of command, and I hope that that's followed as best as possible where, you know, we go to the teacher, to the building administrator, to the superintendent. And then if there is concerns, then it comes to the board. But, you know, the board, board does make the policy, and the items are just things that are discussed or brought by the superintendent.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. Do you view the Board of Education as answering to the superintendent or the superintendent answering to the board?
The short answer is that the superintendent answers to the board. It is a collaborative relationship. We are lay folks. We are not all public school administrators who have been taught and trained about the budget line items and how these things are constructed. And so we do rely on those experts for information. We are then responsible to the community and listening to and for feedback about large-scale decisions, and we do our very best. The superintendent also answers to the board as a full entity. So individuals on the board are not empowered to instruct that person with individual instructions. We are responsible for collaborating and coming to consensus.
Okay, candidate, thank you very much. And now the same question for Kelly Ankar. Do you view the Board of Education as answering to the superintendent or the superintendent answering to the board? Kelly Ankar?
The answer, of course, is that the superintendent answers to the board. I think the, the real question is that what role does the school board play? And how can they proceed and make sure that the public knows that, that the school board recognizes their responsibility to hold the superintendent accountable? I think the best way to do that, not only for the superintendent's benefit, but the school board's benefit, but specifically the public's benefit, is to have complete transparency when it comes to the interactions between the school board and the superintendent and all processes that are in place. I don't think that the superintendent should put himself in positions where it's, it's outside of the account of the school board. There, there's a lot of work that he's responsible for, and that's the lane that he should be able to stay in safely.
Thank you, candidate. And now lastly, Ken Brooks, same question. Do you view the Board of Education as answering to the superintendent or the superintendent answering to the board? Ken Brooks?
All right, I'll say, all of them had the great answer. It's the truth. We, we, we work with our superintendent. The only employee that, that, that we review is the superintendent, and we do an annual review of him. Our relationship with him is, is what guides us in our relationship with the district. And as they've said, there is a chain of command, and, and we work within that. But I think that, I'll be honest, I'll say that our superintendent has, has very much worked to educate us on, on the needs and what our school district can expect. He's great about showing us the budget and educating us why, why those needs exist. And that relationship is, it is, it's collaborative.
Thank you, candidate. Now we're going to move on to the next question. Our first answer is Kurt Viner. The question is, do you believe everything that was promised to the voters in the recent bond has been accomplished? If not, what more should be done? Kurt Viner?
As far as facilities-wise, I, I believe we've followed through with what we had promised at the time that we passed that bond. There's always revisions. As of right now, the middle, the elementary, the Felton Elementary School, we haven't even seen those drawings. So as things come, you're trying to do what's best for students and, and faculty and that kind of thing. So some of it is the facility-wise and what we've promised so far, yes, I would agree. I, I, you know, well, is the financials at the end? Hopefully, we're there to finish strong like we started with. So. But as far as it's been going, I believe we have.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. Do you believe everything that was promised to the voters in the recent bond has been accomplished? If not, what more should be done?
Well, in the remaining year, year and a half, eighteen months of construction planning and moving the students around, I, I think we, we have a plan in place and the timeline is still on schedule, which means that the budget should fall in as budgets are extremely related to time. I think that we gave the people the facilities that they expected, the ability to host major artistic events and sporting events, and be able to be a very beautiful and welcoming facility for our entire community. I am very proud of the work that we've done there. And I do believe that our management of the project overall is going to accomplish everything.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kelly Ankar. Do you believe everything that was promised to the voters in the recent bond has been accomplished? If not, what should be done?
with regard to, you know, building and finances, but there has been a shortcoming when it comes to transparency. And I know that that was, has been promised and has been discussed all along. So I think going forward, we could correct that perception on the part of the public by working together to make sure that we are completely transparent, that the board is able to ask questions and have enough time for discussion and see the plans far in advance of the building and make sure that if there's public input, that everybody has that opportunity to be heard and feel like that they're being listened to and truly, you know, make a way forward to make a better definition of the transparency that we were promised.
Okay, thank you candidate. And now the same question for Ken Brooks. Do you believe everything that was promised to the voters in the recent bond has been accomplished? If not, what more should be done? Ken Brooks?
I do believe so far, everything that has, that was promised and everything that we, that the city of Hayes voted on, has been delivered and within budget and within time. And we have, as stated, we have about another year and a half to go to finish up the full bond project. The board has been brought every piece as it comes. We've been able to review plans. We've been able to go out and walk through. As that high school was being built, we were there, at least one board member was there probably every two to three weeks that last year as it was being built. And I think that we, our board meetings are televised. We do a great job of trying to make sure that everything stays the way it should be and everything needs to be in line.
Thank you candidate. And now finally, the same question for Craig Pallister. Do you believe everything that was promised to the voters in the recent bond has been accomplished? If not, what more should be done?
I believe the bond, as it was voted on by the community, has provided the general outline of everything that was in the bond issue. I remember back during the bond election as the outline for all the buildings and the, I know the superintendent, the board has gone back through and tried to provide different things, change orders if needed for better situation for teachers, students. I'm not sure where the word "promise" came in. The bond issue was a outline and the money that would redo, build the new high school, redo the other buildings such as Roosevelt. I've been at the open house on Roosevelt. I've been at the open house on Hayes High. And a lot of the changes have been made that were in the bond issue.
Thank you candidate. Your time is up. Thank you candidates for your answers. We're going to move on to the next question and the first person to answer this question will be Megan Zimperi-Lilpop. Do you believe that faculty and staff are protected by the First Amendment for anything they might post on social media? Megan Zimperi-Lilpop?
I believe that our personnel policies would be where you would find the answer to that question. I think that we have a social media policy and we write these things down so we don't have to memorize them. I could not speak to the, of course, I believe in the First Amendment and I believe in everyone's right to express themselves. And so long as we are carrying the banner for our school and our district and providing effective and positive communication when we represent the school, then what people do in their private time, I personally have, I believe that they should be allowed to do that. I also think that, as I said, the personnel policy would have to guide any action made in any, in any single situation.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Kelly Ankar. Do you believe faculty and staff are protected by the First Amendment for anything that they might post on social media? Kelly Ankar? I'm sorry.
Everyone is protected by the Constitution for their First Amendment free speech rights. They can say whatever they want in whatever setting they want. That does not mean that they're protected from consequences of their speech and what they say. When a, well, when anyone, regardless of their business that they're in or whether their position is, when they say something, it becomes a code of conduct issue, not a free speech issue. They can still say whatever they want, but if they violate the code of conduct of their employer or the school board or the school district or, you know, anyone in that setting, that's where we become, you know, where we have an issue and they may not be free from consequences of their speech, even though they were allowed to say it.
Okay, thank you candidate. Same question now for Ken Brooks. Do you believe faculty and staff are protected by the First Amendment for anything they might post on social media? Ken Brooks?
When I ran four years ago, I used social media quite a bit. I've been off social media for over two years now. I, I'm going to say that it's a question that, as far as I'm concerned, if they're posting things that affect our school district, if they're posting things that include students, our fellow educators, yes, the freedom from consequences is not there. They should be held accountable. I, I don't know how you police that. I don't know enough to say that, as far as the First Amendment goes, again, like everyone here will probably say, we're for the First Amendment, but there has to be consequences for words that are damaging. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Craig Pallister. Do you believe faculty and staff have, are protected by the First Amendment for anything they might post on social media? Craig Pallister?
Your question goes, the First Amendment, I believe in it, as our kids and our staff and our faculty are in school, they need to be heard, but you put in the word in through social media. That's where it gets a little bit dicey with how it's used in social media with that. And if anything they say, well, I don't believe anything, everything is protected by the First Amendment. You have to think about who you're hurting, what is the good part of it, is how you're using the First Amendment. So again, First Amendment is so important, we've seen that around our nation and how it's used in politics and different things like that, but social media, that's a whole different ballgame.
Thank you candidate. And now finally Kurt Vainar. Same question. Do you believe faculty and staff are protected by the First Amendment for anything they might post on social media? Kurt Vainar?
Yeah, I believe that First Amendment does protect your freedom of speech. I would sure hope that as a faculty or staff member, you'd be careful because you are representing our school district with what you say and do at all times. So even when I was a student teacher many moons ago, I remember professor says, "You don't go to the establishment in your hometown where you're teaching because people will see you." And when you go work at night, you turn on the light so they know you're working late. So I still remember some of those things. But you don't get away with that. You can't yell fire and not have consequences come your way when you do things like that. Anything that's be released on social media that has information about students and faculty is another ball of wax and the legal system is all about that for those that are releasing information that pertain to student and faculty.
Thank you candidates. We're going to move on to the next question and the first answer will be from Kelly Ankar for this question. According to data provided by the Public School Review, the student-to-teacher ratio at Hayes High has increased well over the state average the last few years. To alleviate this would mean hiring additional teachers and finding additional classroom space. As a board member, how do you find the funding for this? Kelly Ankar?
I think that hiring a full-time grant writer very, very soon would be my first move. Like I said, they pay for themselves in a very short fashion and we'd have to make sure that the funds that are generated regardless of the source are used wisely and that they're, that we maximize every dollar for the classrooms so that way we can provide, you know, a better student-to-teacher ratio and more space for the students. I think we would look at outside sources to see, you know, what is out there, what other state programs there are. I would protect our federal dollars so that way we're not facing losses in addition to trying to search for other ways to bring in more revenue. I would protect what we have. I would look to the community to see cooperative efforts between all of us so that way we could make sure that we have support for our school district.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Ken Brooks. According to data provided by the Public School Review, the student-to-teacher ratio at Hayes High has increased well over the state average in the last few years. To alleviate this would mean hiring additional teachers and finding additional classroom space. As a board member, how do you find the funding for this? Ken Brooks?
That question's kind of all over the place. So I haven't seen this data that shows that we're well over the average. As far as the space, that's what the bond really was about more than anything else, is creating space for our students and our educators. And if you go look at that new high school, there is a lot of space there. As far as how we create revenue to increase that, I'm not sure because it's there, we've done that. As far as teachers, you continue to provide a good workspace for them. We've increased the teacher salaries over the last four years. We've done things to work with the teachers and our goal is to retain them and to bring in new students, new teachers. And one of the things I'll add out there is maybe a student teacher, I'm about to give one there, so.
Candidate, your time's up. Thank you very much, Ken Brooks. Same question now for Craig Pallister. According to data provided by the Public School Review, the student-to-teacher ratio at Hayes High has increased well over the state average in the last few years. To alleviate this would mean hiring additional teachers and finding additional classroom space. As a board member, how do you find the funding for this? Craig Pallister?
I know as a board and the school board looks at the enrollment every year and where the grade levels are going up and down as they're moving through the K-12 system with that. And I know as we've closed schools like Lincoln and Washington, we've been able to move students to different schools and we look at the student ratio at the elementaries, especially at the kindergarten one and two, to make sure that that's our lowest area so those kids are getting the one-on-one help, that they need to get a positive start in the school district. Then we go up to the upper grades and in the middle school. Can we reduce staff, our numbers down at the middle school? If they are, I know we've been adding staff out at the high school over the last couple of years because that's where the largest numbers are right now.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Kurt Vainar. According to data provided by Public School Review, the student-to-teacher ratio at Hayes High has increased well over the state average in the last few years. To alleviate this would mean hiring additional teachers and finding additional classroom space. As a board member, how do you find the funding for this? Kurt Vainar?
Okay, I do agree. We got classes, some elementary classes, we got 23, 24 students. And I do believe to be better served that the teacher ratio should be lower. The issue with the classroom spaces are already there. Roosevelt's got classrooms that are built, they're not being filled right now, so I don't think that the space thing's an issue. You only have so much money, so you're going to decide, and the majority of it is for salaries, so if you're going to continue to give raises, you're going to hire more teachers, then the raises are different. And you decide and make those decisions each and every year during negotiations for how that goes. So I think with fluctuating class sizes, you fluctuate the teachers well. I would hope with the consolidation of our elementaries that we're moving to bigger ones, that, you know, the support staff would be reduced because there would be less need for that as well. Also, I think there's some grants, but another one is state funding and when we fully don't fund special education, that's an issue as well.
Time's up candidate. Thank you very much. And now finally, last candidate here for the same question, Megan Zimperi-Lilpop. According to data provided by the school, Public School Review, the student-to-teacher ratio at Hayes High has increased well over the state average in the last few years. To alleviate this would mean hiring additional teachers and finding additional classroom space. As a board member, how do you find the funding for this? Megan Zimperi-Lilpop?
So I agree that I would very much like to see this data. It is not unusual for a high school to have a higher student-to-teacher ratio than the elementary or even the middle school classes, just because of the way that those classes are structured. They're just like, you have a bigger band, you have all the classes in the same orchestra. It's just doing some stuff on the numbers. But I think that with our plan, and I'm sure that this will play out, we are going to have a shared campus, which means that we are already planning a couple of shared specials teachers. Like there will be one, a half a librarian at the high school, a half a librarian at the middle school. We're going to be able to share some of those special teachers that will make sure that we are being really smart about their time and their ability to do their job really well and their distance from their other thing. There are lots of other things that they're doing strategically.
Time's up candidate. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to the next question. Our first answer will be from Ken Brooks for this question. In the past, some Board of Education meetings have become contentious at times due to differing opinions. How do you plan to work professionally with other colleagues as a Board of Education member? Ken Brooks?
I will say that there's seven different personalities up there on that board and each meeting, there is a difference of opinion and there has to be compromise. At the end of the meeting though, or at the end of every vote, there's seven votes. If the vote doesn't go your way, you can't sit there and be angry. You have to accept that there was three, four people that voted to pass whatever you didn't feel needed to pass or didn't pass what you felt needed to pass. But you can't hold that. You can't be angry about that and you just need to continue to work for what's best for our school district and not worry about our own personal feelings.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Craig Pallister. In the past, some Board of Education meetings have become contentious at times due to differing opinions. How do you plan to work professionally with other colleagues as a Board of Education member? Craig Pallister?
I think you hit it there. Work professionally with the other board members. You're looking at how to do the best thing for the kids. If every board member, when they vote, they're saying, "Yes, I'm voting yes because this is good for our students. It will make our students more successful." So if you ask yourself, and the board has plenty of time to talk within themselves and discuss, and you can ask those questions professionally, is it good for kids? Is it something we should approve that way? And not try to represent a certain group of the community or say it's a process that I'm voting against. You're either voting yes for kids or no, and it would not be good for kids.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Kurt Vainar. In the past, some Board of Education meetings have become contentious at times due to differing opinions. How do you plan to work professionally with other colleagues as a Board of Education member? Kurt Vainar?
There are seven people on that board and there are seven different perspectives with seven different backgrounds. And I would hope that they bring seven, you know, different perspectives to each and every item that we discuss. So therefore, you're going to have some discussion. If that wasn't true, then you don't need a school board, you just need seven rubber stamps and we move on. And that's, it's a quicker philosophy that way. You would hope that there are grown adults up there and I would hope that you allow everybody to voice their concern. Also, there's the ability to table a motion to gather more information that you can do above and beyond. You can make phone calls. I call Mr. Hip several times about the financial stuff, so I have those answers to the questions before the board meeting, so we don't need that time taken, placed there. Also, once the vote's taken and the vote's got four one way or the other, it's over and it's done dealing, it's time to move on.
Thank you candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zimperi-Lilpop. In the past, some Board of Education meetings have become contentious at times due to differing opinions. How do you plan to work professionally with other colleagues as a Board of Education member? Megan Zimperi-Lilpop?
Yes, thank you. I do- Yes, thank you. I do review the materials prior to the meetings. And I go into those meetings expecting everyone else to have read the materials at least as well as I did. I understand that sometimes we have differing time flexibility in our weekends and our prep time. I can only control myself, though. And I think that one way to look at it is to realize that if a board member needs more information and we think we already had it, then it's an opportunity that we can use to educate the public about different materials that we've already had or had read several times. I would like to get better at doing that myself. But yes, I do have expectations of everybody showing up in their best, best way. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. And now Kelly Ankar with the same question. In the past, some Board of Education meetings have become contentious at times due to differing opinions. How do you plan to work professionally with other colleagues as a Board of Education member? Kelly Ankar?
I think we all can be committed to setting a really good example of professional behavior and leadership positions. But one way that I think would help everyone is if we take some of the pressure off. I think sometimes that produces some of the conflict where the board gets their agenda on Friday. They're expected to do research over the weekend and make phone calls and ask questions, vote on Monday. If the agenda was given much closer or closer to the previous meeting and further in advance of the meeting that they're expected to vote on, if they had more time for discussion and thought and looking at things and maybe discussing a little bit more, it might take some of the pressure off and reduce some of the conflict and some of the feelings of being a little bit on edge when there is a difference of ideas in the board meeting.
Thank you, candidate. We're going to move on to the next question now. Craig Pallister, you'll be answering this question first. What is the role of civic education and engagement in USD 489 curriculum? Should civic education be enlarged or diminished within the overall curriculum? Craig Pallister?
I think as our, as our students, our community, they get their information from different sources anymore. Used to be you had three TV stations or a newspaper and you got all your information from the local government, the state government, the US government through these sources. But as everybody is getting their information from different sources, students need to be taught what the processes are through the school system. So we're having an educated voter because some of our students are voting before they get out of high school if they're 18 years old. And they need to have the background, the information, where to find information and be a informed voter.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kurt Vainar. What is the role of civic education and engagement in USD 489 curriculum? Should civic education be enlarged or diminished within the overall curriculum? Kurt Vainar?
First of all, I'd be most impressed if anybody up here knows the civic curriculum of our high school. I would have hoped that that's a high school curriculum, that's a department, and they're doing the best that they can. I don't think anybody up here is especially that. But I would, I think that we should have helped them out when we have currently removed the cell phone policy from the high school where kids can learn how to talk to each other and have a conversation. And so therefore, this is the first year. There is supposed to be no cell phones to be used at this new high school. And maybe that's the best and the first step that makes that better.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. What role does civic education and engagement play in USD 489 curriculum? Should civic education be enlarged or diminished within the overall curriculum? Megan Zampiri-Lilpop?
So when I joined the board four years ago, about four years ago, we had, I think, two and a half librarians for all of the buildings. No building had a full-time librarian. And we are now employing four full-time librarians, and our middle school and high school share one of those. It is an enormous increase. It's an investment in our kids to provide that media specialist from kindergarten. So they have their own curriculum. I am a public librarian by trade, so I am not intimately familiar with it. But they do teach that. That is part of what that curriculum did and why we may have missed out on years with budget cuts. And I'm really proud of that measure that we installed. I know that they're going to just get better and better as we move forward.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kelly Ankar. What is the role of civic education and engagement in USD 489 curriculum? Should civic education be enlarged or diminished within the overall curriculum? Kelly Ankar?
I certainly don't think it should be diminished. I would, I would review, you know, where it stands right now, but I would guess that it needs expanded. I think that involving students in a student government form, which I know that's, that's something in every school, but we need to make sure that students understand their rights and their responsibilities to their fellow citizens when they graduate and become, you know, the productive and proficient adults that we all want them to be. I think that it should be prioritized and it should be reviewed regularly so we can ensure that civics and government and, and what the legislative bodies are doing and how all of that impacts the students and their families and the community and the school system. I think that should be something that all students feel comfortable knowing and being able to ask questions about and make sure that they're not resorting to other sources to get their civics education.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Ken Brooks. What is the role of civic education and engagement in the USD 489 curriculum? Should civic education be enlarged or diminished within the overall curriculum? Ken Brooks?
All right. I, I think this kind of actually goes back to our, our roles as, as a board. As was said, I don't think any of us know exactly what the civic education is being taught at this, at the school district. We know it exists. We know that our goal is to have good citizens come from our high schools and from our school district. And, and that's why we rely on good people to teach it, which we have. We have good teachers. And that's where the board fits into that. The, the other part of it, and I'm going to sound like I'm just repeating somebody two seats over here, but this year, we got rid of the cell phones in the high school. I have heard nothing but good from that. It has, it helped our students to engage with one another. It has helped communication in the school district, and it's been a good thing.
Thank you, candidate. I think we've finished that question. We're going to move on to another question here. And our first answer will be from Kurt Vainar on this question. With gun violence and school shootings being a regular occurrence in our country, how are you working to create a safe and reassuring environment for both children and their parents? Kurt Vainar?
Well, first of all, as a school board member, I was one of the first ones on the board when we brought in Officer Spencer, who is the school resource officer. He started in the year 23, 24. And that was our first and best step that we've started that. I've heard nothing but great things about him from the school and well, as students. I strongly feel that another one is of need. I hope that we get that down the road. Again, that turns into cost and cost and, and more teachers and that kind of issue. But I, I do believe there's a need. When you're a mile off the interstate, that is a scare for me. I would also, the security cameras, the security systems that we now have in place sure makes it a lot safer. And then we have locked entries in all of our schools. And so there's another precautionary thing that we've done. So, you know, never know about today's world. So we hope they're safe.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. With gun violence and school shootings being a regular occurrence in our country, how are you working to create a safe and reassuring environment for both children and their parents? Megan Zampiri-Lilpop?
We have installed in the last several years some improved security measures. The new buildings have better security measures. That is not enough. Prevention is where we should focus as a community. And one of the ways in which we do this collectively is through social emotional learning measures. So social emotional learning is a buzzword, but it is also things like dealing with difficult feelings, dealing with disappointment, working on things that are hard and doing things that are hard anyway. And that is the kind of grade school to high school to beyond kind of teaching that we've been doing for, for some years and that is, is being really focused on in our district. And I'm really proud of the stars that we've gotten. We, we are really setting some standards here. So I think that we'll see that progress and I hope that parents stay engaged with it.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Kelly Ankar. With gun violence and school shootings being a regular occurrence in our country, how are you working to create a safe and reassuring environment for both children and their parents? Kelly Ankar?
I would prioritize increasing the school resource officer's presence. I think the security cameras are great and could even be expanded to include further out on the grounds and even out as far as the street. So that way, someone inside the building can see vehicles approaching the, approaching the school building, the physical location. I think that would provide security and comfort to the students and the teachers alike and to the parents. I think that focusing and addressing mental health issues, identifying students that are at risk, students that may need extra help or supervision in times of crisis. This, this community's been through a lot in the last few weeks, and I know the students are hurting also. So, you know, anything we can do to identify ones that might need a little extra support and counseling to ensure that there are risks of, of feeling like this is coming.
Thank you, candidate. Thank you. Same question for Ken Brooks. With gun violence and school shootings being a regular occurrence in our country, how are you working to create a safe and reassuring environment for both kids and their parents? Ken Brooks?
I would, I would say that, you know, we did, we added the student resource officer. I agree that we probably need a second. And I think that we need to probably, we do need to be looking how we can fund that. The rest of it, the locks and everything else, I want to, I want to put out there again what was said earlier. Our foundation has, did a great job providing that. One of the things that was mentioned was the auction coming up. I want to put that out there. It's October 25th. For anyone who doesn't know, be there. The, but, but our schools, if we're going to keep our students safe and our parents feeling safe, our students feeling safe, it's a lot about counseling because that's what it, a lot of it comes down to is there's a fear more than there's the actual there. But I got four seconds. There we go.
Thank you, candidate. Very good. Same question for Craig Pallister. With gun violence and school shootings being a regular occurrence in our country, how are you working to create a safe and reassuring environment for both kids and their parents? Craig Pallister?
This is an issue that is, tends to get worse as we've gone through the years. We've gone through the cameras, as we've talked about, everybody up here, the, the officers in the schools and the community. Our Hayes Police Force, our Sheriff's Patrol, they come into the schools and are involved. I drop off my granddaughter at the Hayes Middle School, and I see a officer holding the door open in the mornings. And that is one of the keys, I believe, not just that officer, but if every student has one adult they can talk to in the building around. It doesn't have to be a teacher. It can be a para, a secretary, a custodian. They need that strong adult in the building to be able to tell that a student is a danger to the building.
Thank you, candidate. And with that, we're at 6:57. We won't be able to get to any more questions. I really appreciate your responses. I appreciate the audience and your questions. Excellent questions. Sorry we couldn't get to all of those very good questions. But let's give a round of applause to the board members and the candidates for the school district 489. We can do closing statements and remarks, but I would like to limit it to 30 seconds if possible because we're running out of time. So let's begin with Megan Zampiri-Lilpop. You'd be the first for the next question. So closing statements, Megan Zampiri-Lilpop?
I thank you for your time this evening. I'm really excited to see the number of people here engaged in this excellent community event and learning about their civic responsibilities. And I look forward to working further on the school board. I really enjoy it. I enjoy giving back to the kids in this way. I enjoy getting to know them in all of the ways that I've invited to do so. And I appreciate every single one of them.
Thank you, candidate. And closing remarks from Kelly Ankar.
The future growth of Hayes is dependent on people being able to afford to live here. And that is especially true if we want Hayes High graduates to stay here to raise their families. The school board has a critical role in that growth by respecting the taxpayers who fund our schools with commitment to revenue-neutral mill levy, better control over spending, finding any way possible to cut waste and maximizing every dollar. Raising taxes cannot be the first lever to pull to raise funds. By managing our spending and growing our community and therefore our tax base, USD 489 can fund great schools while protecting the homeowners.
Thank you, candidate. Your time's up. Now Ken Brooks, closing remarks.
Thank you. You know, four years ago when I was here, there was a lot of difference of opinion, so it was exciting for y'all to watch because there was, one guy would say everything opposite of me right after I said it. You didn't get that this time. I hope you stayed through here. I hope you vote. I want to encourage you to go out and vote. Vote for Ken Brooks for sure. But vote and know that we care. I'm going to say that there's, there's a lot of people that are running here that really care about our school district and our students. Be sure to vote.
Thank you, candidate. And now closing remarks for Craig Pallister.
I want to have 30 seconds of thank yous. I want to thank our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers, our cooks, our custodians. They are the ones that are so dedicated and work so hard to make this school district the great school district we have right now. And all across the nation, teachers, educators have been taking a lot of, we need to tell the Hayes educators, staff, thank you. You are respected.
Candidate, you're out of time. Thank you very much. And now closing remarks from Kurt Vainar.
As you vote, I'd ask you to please ask yourself, why would you not, why would you not want a former educator on the school board? We have farmers on our co-op boards. We have doctors on our hospital boards. Why would you not want a former school teacher and a pretty good one at that on your school board? Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now, I missed the opening remarks, but I did the closing remarks on purpose so that we could give two rounds of applause for these fabulous candidates. Thank you. That was a joke. And I'm Dr. Jase Diamonds. We'll be back with the election forum debate for the Hayes City Commissioner in about 15 minutes. So 15 minutes, you'll have a break. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This is a general reminder for everyone that we are accepting questions for the Hays City Commission. And if you'd like to write a question, you may do so. There are paper and pen outside in the lobby. You can put it in a basket out in the lobby and we'll try to get to those questions. So if you have a question for the city commission, feel free to spend some time writing it right now while we're at break. All right, we are ready to begin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Election Forum of 2025 for the Hays City Commission. We are going to be asking a series of questions of these candidates for the Hays City Commission office. And I want to encourage you all in the audience, if you have any questions that you'd like to write, you may do so. There are some pieces of paper and some writing utensils in the lobby. You can put a question in the basket there and we'll try to get to that question as soon as we can. So for the candidates, we will begin with opening remarks. You can introduce yourself and do opening remarks for 60 seconds. We will begin with Reese Barrick and then we will work our way down. For the first prepared question, we'll begin with Sandy Jacobs and we'll work alternatively from there. And so without further ado, opening remarks for Reese Barrick.
Thank you. I'm Reese Barrick. I'm the Director of the Sternberg Museum of Natural History. And I'd like to thank the Chamber, Docking Institute, the Student Government, the Political Science Department, and Tiger Media Network for providing the organization in facilitating this event tonight, the public forum. It's important for everyone to get a chance to know all of us as people and as candidates beyond just what's on a campaign sign or a ballot. What I'm hoping for tonight is that we provide a compelling case for all of you to go out and vote. Local government affects everyone every day and I've been proud to be a positive force for the city of Hays for the last four years. You know, Hays has a $54 million budget that the commission is, needs to set priorities and goals. And being a commissioner has given me the opportunity to work with a lot of amazing people, 12 city departments, boards, committees, and a lot of people within the community, builders and developers, and it's been a great opportunity.
Thank you, candidate. And now opening remarks for Sandy Jacobs.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sandy Jacobs. I'm honored to be a candidate for the Hays City Commission. I want to start by thanking the same group of folks, the FHSU Student Government Association, the American Democracy Project, Tiger Media Network, and the Hays Chamber for hosting this forum. I'm a lifelong resident of Hays where my husband and I raised our family. Over the years, I've been a businesswoman, a community volunteer, and for the past eight years, a city commissioner. Those experiences have strengthened my belief that leadership is about listening, working together, and doing what's right for the people we serve. Serving as a city commissioner is a nonpartisan position and I appreciate that very much. My priorities haven't changed, to leave Hays better than I found it, to promote responsible growth, and protect taxpayer dollars, and to enhance our quality of life for every resident. This is my home and I'm deeply committed to keeping it strong, welcoming, and well-prepared for the future. I'd be honored to earn your vote on November the 4th.
Thank you, candidate. And now for opening remarks, we have David Koschel.
Thank you. I'm David Koschel. I appreciate you all being here tonight. I was born in Hays and for the better part of my life, it's been the place I've called home. Was raised in the foster care system in the area and I've worked blue collar jobs in the area and through western Kansas for all my life. I'm a plumber here for the Amen Company. I've also been a youth advocate and mentor across western Kansas. I believe that I'm qualified to be on this board because the blue collar, the working class deserve a voice on this commission as well. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. And now for opening remarks, we have Sean Musel.
Hello, I'm Sean Musel. First off, want to wish my wife a happy birthday. She had to miss this to go to my daughter's volleyball game. Just want to thank everybody that's supported me the last few years I've been on the commission. We've had some interesting times, but we've had some great times. A few years ago, I sat up here and all we talked about is how are we going to build houses? And you look at right now, we've got close to 200 houses in the next five to 10 years being built and I'm very proud of that. You know, we turfed, turfed Bickle Smith and it's brought in more and more teams out here which helps our tax base. And I'm just, I'm very thankful to be part of this community. I've lived here for 30 years. I've raised three kids. Two kids are in college, one in middle school. And I hope to leave this community toward my kids, even if they move away for a time that they want to come back and settle here forever.
Thank you, candidate. And now for opening remarks, we have David Velasing.
Good evening. My name's David Velasing. I'm a retired sergeant from the Hays Police Department. I've got over 22 years combined experience between military and civilian law enforcement. I am now retired and I own my own training company called DXI Training Solutions and I have the pleasure of traveling the country, training first responders. Now, my vision and the vision of my company are one and the same and that's to leave this world better than I found it. To do that, I use four core values. I treat everybody with dignity and respect, even when they're not being respectful to me. I am transparent. I explain to people what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. I give everybody a voice because everybody wants to be understood and I act and communicate without any biases. So a vote for me would be a vote for you to have a voice and to be understood. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. And now we're going to move to some questions. Let me remind the audience, you can write your question and we will try to get to it. There are some pieces of paper and some writing utensils there in the lobby that you can use to write questions. The first question we have is for Sandy Jacobs. Due to the increasing politicization of even local politics, how can you assure voters that you will work in the best interests of all citizens?
That's a very good question and one that's really near and dear to my heart. I haven't run for any other political offices since I've been a retired banker and I always wanted to be on the city commission. And one of the same, one of the reasons and the main reason I want to serve is because it is nonpolitical. It's a, it's a nonpartisan group. We can't ever not have some of our beliefs and feelings come to the table, but we're very respectful about it being nonpartisan and we don't bring major political issues to our table for discussion.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Koschel. Can you help me pronounce your name? I'm sorry, candidate.
It rhymes with social.
Koschel, thank you. Due to the increasing politicization of even local politics, how can you assure voters that you will work in the best interests of all citizens? David Koschel?
It just comes down to hearing everybody out. We have, the city of Hays has meetings all four weeks out of the month. Anybody is welcome to come to the meetings and speak their mind regardless of their political positions. And as long as we're there to hear them out and take their opinions in stride with everybody else, then I think that we'll be able to do that just fine.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. Due to the increasing politicization of even local politics, how can you assure voters that you will work in the best interests of all citizens? Sean Musel?
For me, I guess that's kind of how I live my life. If people have questions for me, I always try to answer them and just be real with people. To me, I've always thought the worst commissioners is somebody that gets on that has an agenda. I mean, it's for my community that I live in and it should always be like that. And you, you have to get along with the board. You know, a lot of times our board, we don't always agree on stuff, but at the end of the day, we get along, we respect. the day, we get along, we respect each other, and that's the way it should be.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. Due to the increasing politicization of even local politics, how can you assure voters that you will work in the best interests of all citizens?
There's going to be times where we don't agree. That's just human nature. My job is to do the best with the information I'm provided with and to listen to everybody. We were given two ears and one mouth for a reason. They're supposed to be used proportionately. And I promise to listen, to ask questions, sometimes the hard questions that others may not want to ask, and to make sure that I'm acting in the best interest of all parties involved, not just myself or the city, but the people of the city.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. Due to the increasing politicization of even local politics, how can you assure voters that you will work in the best interests of all citizens? Reese Barrick?
Yes, well, I had that sort of question when I first ran for the office. I wasn't exactly sure how it was going to look with all of the other commissioners and working with them. And what I found out, that it's really an amazing group because national or state-level politics don't really enter into the things that the city needs to run and to grow and to progress and move forward to endure the quality of life that we want to have. And I've always been very impressed, and it's the reason why I wanted to be on a city commission, because you can affect the city and the local people and listen to everyone and get a chance to meet more people without having partisan politics be a part of it. And it's really been a joy to be able to work with commissioners that don't have agendas but only have the best interests of the city of heart, even when we don't agree. And we don't always agree, but we all know that we're all working for the best interests of the city.
Thank you, candidate. And now we're going to move to the next question. David Koschel, you'll answer this question first. Name one specific area where the city is spending money unnecessarily. How would you stop it? And how would you ensure officials are held accountable? David Koschel?
Well, one that I hear quite a bit is the bike lanes on the streets. I know that they're spoken about highly in public, but behind the scenes, I don't know many people that appreciate them. I believe that the bike lanes or something, just right off the bat, just an easy off that we can stop maintaining, let them fade back out, and that's just a little bit more money that we can use for something the bulk of the community will use.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. Name one specific area where the city is spending money unnecessarily. How would you stop it? And how would you ensure officials are held accountable? Sean Musel?
Something we've been talking about quite a bit is parks. I'm a huge fan of parks. I mean, you look at the Arc Park, it's one of the busiest places in town almost every day, even when it's cool outside. I think we have to reprioritize on what we're putting in the parks, and it's something that we've set out, we're going to be talking about very soon. You know, I don't think we do have a lot of wasteful spending, but off the top of my head, I think the parks is something that we need to look into to see if we can adjust how we're maintaining and what we're spending in the parks.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. Name one specific area where the city is spending money unnecessarily. How would you stop it? And how would you ensure officials are held accountable?
That's a tough question. After doing a deep dive into their budget this last year, they are very cautious with their budget, but there are little areas that we can adjust in. As far as one specific area that's a big number, that's hard to find, but there are little areas we can cut back in. Getting more out of the resources that we currently have, like Sean mentioned with the parks, making sure we're installing the appropriate equipment there that has a longer lifespan, getting the most out of the vehicles that we're using at various departments, whether it's parks, fire, or the police department. There's lots of ways to save money in the long term, but we've got to have a big-picture goal in mind.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. Name one specific area where the city is spending money unnecessarily. How would you stop it? And how would you ensure officials are held accountable? Reese Barrick?
Well, I will be the person that says, I don't think the city is spending money unnecessarily. I think that we look very closely every year with a budget as to how we're spending it and what our priorities are going to be. And sometimes our priorities shift a little bit, but the city does a really good job of being able to spend money and pay for major projects with cash, which saves the city from having to bond for large projects, which means we save and don't pay interest on funding projects. If you look at quality of life issues, they're important, and I don't think we spend money wastefully because we're always looking to see what our priorities are. And when you come to a city meeting and you look at the projects that are funded, they always come in under budget, like nine times out of 10. It's pretty amazing, and so we get a lot accomplished with the funding that we have.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. Name one specific area where the city is spending money unnecessarily. How would you stop it? And how would you ensure officials are held accountable? Sandy Jacobs?
I would suggest that there's not a lot of efficiencies to find, but I'd also not fool enough to think that there's not some. We look at our budget very, very carefully every year. I've served for eight years, and as a retired banker, I have a good understanding of our budget. I look at every single line item as we go through it. But the other thing I have is tremendous confidence in our staff. We have a staff between the city manager, the deputy city manager, they work very hard to bring in a conservative number every year, and I think we proved that again this year, and we're able to stay revenue neutral. I will promise you, every day, at every meeting, every expense is looked at very carefully and understood before it gets approved at our level.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to move on to the next question. The first answer for this question will be from Sean Musel. Do you think the City Commission has any role in addressing the increase in political violence? If so, what is that role? Sean Musel?
Yeah, I think we do. I guess, like I said earlier, is, you know, when you discuss items, being respectful to people, and yeah, I don't know. I guess the only thing I can say is just being respectful, even when people disagree. You know, when you've been a commissioner as long as I have, you get a lot of emails of, you know, consistent stuff, and sometimes people aren't real nice. The language isn't very nice, but you know, you try to always respond, be respectful. You know, I replied to one even not too long ago, I screwed up and, you know, made a mistake, you know, and I said something I wish I wouldn't have, but I did. But to me, it's just treating people the way you want to be treated, no different than what I tell my kids. But I think it's ridiculous the way the political violence has become in our country, and I don't see it happening anytime soon in the City of Hayes.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. Do you think the City Commission has any role in addressing the increase in political violence? If so, what is that role? David Velasing?
We have to lead by example. The tone we set in City Hall branches out to every department, and it branches out to every citizen in this community. And if we can't lead by example and be able to manage conflict when it arises, then we have no business being up here in those seats. It's our responsibility to address those concerns and issues early on before they become violent.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. Do you think the City Commission has any role in addressing the increase in political violence? If so, what is that role? Reese Barrick?
Yes, thank you. Well, I agree that at the City Commission level, we are examples. We have to set the model for discussion and disagreement and the ability to work with each other. It's also a way that we can, you know, see and provide sort of safe spaces. We have a lot of times in the City of Hayes where people will have, beyond Vine Street, and they'll be pushing a cause, and we have the police out there just making sure everybody's safe, has water, is feeling okay about how they are being treated while they're out pushing for their cause. That means that respect is being shown, and it starts, you know, sort of from the city, but it's how we can provide the ability to have that communication without it turning violent.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. Do you think the City Commission has any role in addressing the increase in political violence? If so, what is that role? Sandy Jacobs?
I can't argue with anything any of the other candidates have said. The one thing that I'm extremely proud of in our community is our police force and our leadership of our police force. The education that they provide in this community and the awareness of our law enforcement in our community, I think, is very, very positive. Young people especially understand that we have a police force that's out here to help us and to educate us. I think education is the key to so much, and I think that's no different for political violence. We can't hide our head. It happens. We want to make sure that all of our citizens, particularly our young people, are educated in why it shouldn't happen.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Koschel. Do you think the City Commission has any role in addressing the increase in political violence? If so, what is that role? David Koschel?
No. I believe the City Commission has enough on their plate. We need to focus on keeping the city running. All the rest can be taken care of by outside organizations.
Thank you, candidate. And now we're going to move on to the next question. The first person to answer this question will be David Velasing. The R9 Water Project has been delayed by the judicial system every step of the process. What additional efforts do you think should be made by the city, if any, to receive more swift deliberation with regards to the R9 Water Project? David Velasing?
We definitely have to get that project moving forward. First thing, if I were to be elected, would be to sit down and meet with all the parties involved, figure out where we're at, and develop a game plan to push forward. One of the things I travel and I teach is effective communication, and my goal would be to get up there and talk to those people involved and figure out what it is that we need to do to make sure that project is seen through to fruition, and not just 10 years down the road, but within the next four years before the next election. That is a short-term solution to a long-term project. They tout it as a 75-year solution, and we need to get that solved now so our children aren't having to fight that battle later on.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. The R9 Water Project has been delayed by the judicial system every step of the process. What additional efforts do you think should be made by the city, if any, to receive more swift deliberation with regards to the R9 Water Project? Reese Barrick?
Yes, it's a great question. It's one of the reasons I was excited to be on the City Commission, is to work on bringing sustainable water to this city for the next 75 years, and we're getting extremely close to that. We've had lots of, with the judicial system, Edwards County has used it in the water pack extremely well because they will always push the limits of how to stall, and it's basically just stalling and costing the City of Hayes money. We have in just the recent past had discussions with the governor's office. The governor's made water a priority for the end of her administration, and we've talked to her a lot about what can happen to sort of push our ability to get water forward just as fast as a dairy can get water pushed forward. And so I think we need to have more discussions with the people of Edwards County and let them know that we are being good neighbors, and we expect that.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you very much. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. The R9 Water Project has been delayed by the judicial system every step of the process. What additional efforts do you think should be made by the city, if any, to receive more swift deliberation with regards to the R9 Water Project? Sandy Jacobs?
I always forget, sorry. As I planned for this evening, I had to remind myself to be nice. This subject, it's very difficult. We have done everything by the book from day one, from purchasing the ranch and trying to get the water to us. We're using water sustainably. I challenge us to find anybody in the state of Kansas or in this country that uses water more sustainable than we do. We're the only county in the state of Kansas that doesn't have a sustainable water source. The legal system, I used a phrase when we were visiting with Russell that I kind of regretted saying because I didn't mean to say it in that fashion, but the legal system is failing us. We have spent a lot of money in the last 10 years trying to take care of this. We have cash in the bank for our down payment. We win everything substantive that Edwards County sues for. Anybody can sue anybody for anything, as we all know.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you very much. And the same question for David Koschel. The R9 Water Project has been delayed by the judicial system every step of the process. What additional efforts do you think should be made by the city, if any, to receive more swift deliberation with regards to the R9 Water Project? David Koschel?
With the R9 Water Project, it's something that I looked into a lot when I first started this candidacy. I've changed my initial opinion on it to a point. I feel like, as Ms. Jacobs has said, we're without a sustainable water source. I was looking at it in the aspect of, should we be taking someone else's sustainable water source then? However, looking at all the different avenues and options that we have, I don't see a viable option anywhere else besides the R9 Water Project. With that being said, we've been fighting for this for decades. I think that at this point, we should leave it to litigation until it is settled. I think we've spent enough in this project.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question, lastly, for Sean Musel. The R9 Water Project has been delayed by the judicial system every step of the process. What additional efforts do you think should be made by the city, if any, to receive more swift deliberation with regards to the R9 Water Project? Sean Musel?
The R9 Water Project is exactly why I chose to run one more time. I believe, I thought, four years ago, this would have been settled, and I didn't realize how long it'd be stuck in the courts. The citizens of this community is what has made this possible for us, and I believe it's going to happen. You know, we got an email from the city manager the other day that the lawyers on the other side, they purposely put stuff out of order just to slow the process down. And to me, it's insane that they can get away from doing that, but it's legal, I guess. It's going to happen, and our community is going to continue to grow, our region's going to continue to grow, and, you know, and we're not taking it away from Kinsley. We bought the water on the fair market. We've done everything possible. I believe we still use 68 gallons per pupil in this community, and it's the lowest in the state by far, and we're going to continue to do the right thing until it's settled, and we will still continue to do the right thing once we get it.
Thank you, candidate. And now we're going to move on to the next question here. The first person to answer this question will be Reese Barrick. Certain subdivisions of the city were designed as affordable housing areas in Hayes. In some of those neighborhoods, houses have been turned into rental properties with multiple tenants in one living space. What can you do as a member of the City Commission to help young families in the community find affordable housing? Reese Barrick?
Yes, well, affordable housing is going to be one of the biggest questions that we're going, the City Commission is going to have to do some research on to address. It's one of the things that we do have, some things that are moving forward. We have, you know, in the past, we've had, Washington School has been turned into apartments that have been sort of low-income housing. We've had affordable housing. Just because we add housing, when you add a lot of housing, it means people might be moving up in housing, which vacates some more affordable housing. We do have some issues, certainly with how we zone things for housing, but most of the time, our zoning allows any type of housing to be in an area. And I think that, you know, just getting started so that people start building and developing houses is going to allow us to move into looking at more affordable housing in the future.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. Certain subdivisions of the city were designed as affordable housing areas in Hayes. In some of those neighborhoods, houses have been turned into rental properties with multiple tenants in one living space. What can you do as a member of the City Commission to help young families in the community find- find affordable housing? Sandy Jacobs?
As a City Commission, doing something specifically to cause the building of affordable housing in our community, I think we're doing that as we can today. But I think the first thing we need to do is really understand what affordable housing means and understand the pieces, to put it. Asking a developer to build what we consider today affordable housing with today's market and cost of goods, it's just impossible. There are, we're looking into a lot of things right now, not the least of which is some government money that may be available for affordable housing. But what we're doing today is causing housing to be built, which is freeing up housing in our community. People moving from an existing home in our community to one of the new projects frees up a property that then can be, hopefully, in more in that affordable range. It's a very, it's an interesting concern when you can't do anything specifically. We are, we're giving in-
Thank you, candidate. You're out of time. Thank you. And now the same question for David Koschel. Certain subdivisions of the city were designed as affordable housing areas in Hayes. In some of those neighborhoods, houses have been turned into rental properties with multiple tenants in one living space. What can you do as a member of the City Commission to help young families in the community find affordable housing? David Koschel?
As it sits now, we've been working on affordable housing developments in the area that are listed as affordable workforce housing. And at the same time, we're hearing that it's impossible to have anything that's affordable for today's market. I think that there are a number of different avenues that the city can go down. One of them might be a land bank for foreclosed or vacant lots where the city can purchase these and invest into the community. There, there's, this is something that's going to take a lot of time, but I think that it's something that we need to, to go back to, to the drawing board with and focus on. Because as it sits, we're trying to grow and grow. Pardon me, we're trying to grow and grow, but we're forgetting the bulk of our community. We're forgetting that the working class and our elderly and the young adults are having a hard time, if not impossible, to find a place that's affordable here.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. Certain subdivisions of the city were designed as affordable housing areas in Hayes. In some of those neighborhoods, houses have been turned into rental properties with multiple tenants living in one space. What can you do as a member of the City Commission to help young families in the community find affordable housing? Sean Musel?
So we've had multiple companies come to the city the last few years, ask us for a letter of support to help build affordable housing. And they, I'm trying to say, they can only build the affordable housing if they get funds from the federal or state and they've been turned down every time. And, you know, our biggest thing is, is we're trying to get a lot of houses built. They're not all affordable, but the goal is, the more we build, hopefully it will open up houses that become more affordable. The word affordable is really different depending on who you are, the age you are. But if we want to continue to grow, we definitely have to get more affordable houses in Hayes. And we're working on it. I know city staff's been working on some stuff right now, but it's just, it's a lot easier than, a lot harder than it seems.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. Certain subdivisions of the city were designed as affordable housing areas in Hayes. In some of those neighborhoods, houses have been turned into rental properties with multiple tenants living in one space. What can you do as a member of the City Commission to help young families in the community find affordable housing? David Velasing?
That's what the new housing that's been built in Hayes is tailored to. The top 25% income earners in the city of Hayes. That leaves 75% of the population unaddressed, other than the trickle-down effect. The RHIDs leave it open to the developer to build whatever they want there. I would suggest putting in a stipulation. You get the RHID if you build X number of houses and then you take and build one more house, but that house needs to meet the income qualifications of the median to low-income people of the city of Hayes. Other options would be incentivizing bringing in modular homes or other more affordable houses into the city of Hayes.
Thank you, candidate. And now we are going to move on to our next question. The first answer to this question will be from Sandy Jacobs. What can the City Commission do to keep young, educated graduates from Fort Hayes State University in the community? Sandy Jacobs?
You've found another passion of mine. One thing you'll hear me talking about in all over our community and not just in Hayes, but all over northwest Kansas, is succession planning in our businesses. We have a lot of independently-owned businesses throughout all of northwest Kansas and particularly here in Hayes with an aging popula, population that may be aging out of those businesses. Most of those owners consider them, that's their retirement. I think we can put together a program between graduating students at Fort Hayes State or Fort Hayes State Northwest, Fort Hayes Tech Southwest, to match them up with some of these businesses that are going to be looking to retire or close their businesses in the next three to five years. Find a way to bring them into, into that business, understand the business, teach them that business where they can step in with a purchase probability when that person decides to retire. So succession planning is a way to figure that piece out, I believe.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Koschel. What can the City Commission do to keep young, educated graduates from Fort Hayes State University in the community? David Koschel?
Build affordable housing.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. What can the City Commission do to keep young, educated graduates from Fort Hayes State University in the community? Sean Musel?
I think we need to have the right housing for them. We need to have quality schools. Need to have quality of life. We need to have just events that young, young adults want to attend in this community. And I think we have a thriving downtown. You go downtown on Fridays and Saturdays and it's packed and it's, people of all ages. But you've got to have something for younger people to do. And that has changed over the years with cell phones and stuff like that. And we just have to keep doing the research and we have to listen to them because sometimes we sit up here and we talk, we need to do this, we need to do this. But I think if we talk to the kids, ask them what they want, I think we can fix it and help it.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. What can the City Commission do to keep young, educated graduates from Fort Hayes State University in the community? David Velasing?
I would encourage the development of a program called the Hayes Workforce Development Council. It would be a collaboration of somebody from the City Commission, local businesses, people from the high school, or administrators from the high school and administrators from Fort Hayes State University, where they all get together and they discuss what they can provide for the students of Hayes. The businesses could sponsor classrooms. The teachers could find students who are interested in career fields and in, around the junior year, show interest, go and job shadow at those businesses. And then their senior year, maybe get some sort of internship. And then as they move up into the college, be connected with the right programs and continue that and we provided incentives so that when they graduate, they stay in Hayes with those businesses.
Thank you, candidate. And now, lastly, the same question for Reese Barrick. What can the City Commission do to keep young, educated graduates from Fort Hayes State University in the community? Reese Barrick?
Yes, well, I think there's a, a lot of things and it all means, depends upon the growth of Hayes and the economics of Hayes. We have to have, of course, increased housing so there's places that people can move into and live. We also have to have the growth of, you know, with the new housing and with water, that's attractive to new businesses, whether it's retail or manufacturing, which would provide opportunity for internships and jobs for graduating people from Fort Hayes Central Tech or whether it's from Fort Hayes State. We have, the university has lots of entrepreneurship programs and internship programs and I think we have to make use of them by providing the ability for more economic opportunity. And I think the quality of life here, as we keep expanding it, increasing some tourism, will provide reasons for people to want to try to stay.
Thank you, candidate. And now we're going to move on to our next question. The first answer for this question will be from David Koschel. And that's a good segue into economic development. What is your approach to economic development and attracting businesses in Hayes? David Koschel?
This will be an unpopular opinion. I think we need to start focusing on the 75% of our community, the bulk of our community who, who keep the city running, who, who run the cashiers, who look after the children while their parents work, flipping burgers, everybody through there. If you go through business after business, you'll see help wanted signs. We currently don't have enough quality workforce to cover a lot of the jobs that we, that we have open in Hayes right now. I think we need to, to build more affordable housing and make sure that there is, that they're able to be here so that they can work here before we can focus on bringing more jobs to the area.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. What is your approach to economic development and attracting businesses in Hayes? Sean Musel?
I think we need to continue the collaboration with the county on Fund and Grow Hayes. I think they do a great job. They've got a lot of retail kind of in the works. It, unfortunately, it just takes many years to get people to want to build in your community because you go across the country and, you know, businesses are downsizing all the time. I think Grow Hayes is doing a good job. I think they've got a lot of things that's coming up that I think people are going to be very happy about. It's just, it's, it's hard to be patient with it. But I think we're doing a good job with that. And I think without Grow Hayes, we wouldn't have a lot of the housing being built here and we wouldn't have some of the development that's going to be here very soon. So I think we just need to continue, keep working with them and not against them and making sure things get done.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. What is your approach to economic development and attracting businesses in Hayes? David Velasing?
I want the city of Hayes to grow, but I want it to grow at a rate that is responsible and sustainable. When we grow too fast, we risk issues with the water. When we grow too fast, we risk issues with our workforce. We've got to be very responsible at how we address that. To do that, we need to get out of the way of the businesses and the people that want to grow this town. So any ordinances and procedures that are slowing down and bogging down that process need to be looked at and potentially addressed. And then incentivize where appropriate, but responsibly, to get those businesses to come here and for small businesses to open up.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. What is your approach to economic development and attracting businesses in Hayes? Reese Barrick?
Well, anytime you want to attract businesses and have some economic growth, there are some things that are important for a city. You need to have a good education system. We have a university and we just built some new schools. You have to have water. We're very close to getting a, a water supply that could support because businesses aren't going to move a place if they don't see it being a sustainable place to bring a bunch of workers in. And so then you have to have housing. You have to have places for people to live. And so a, a business can see, hey, there's places I could bring workers in and they, or there's going to be a population that I can bring that will be able to, to work in my business. And so, uh, these are the things that have to be set before you can attract new businesses. And then we change the unified building code to make it easier for people to build. Retail, tourism, and manufacturing follow the things that you have to have the city set up for with the quality of life.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you very much. And now, lastly, the same question for Sandy Jacobs. What is your approach to economic development and attracting businesses in Hayes? Sandy Jacobs?
I think we've heard the word collaboration more than once tonight and I think that we have caused over the last numbers of years, a really strong collaboration between the city of Hayes, Ellis County, Grow Hayes, Fort Hayes State University on all their campuses, as well as Hayes Medical Center. There are people working on these issues every day. The childcare issue that was major in tantamount in everybody's mind four years ago has taken a huge turn for the better. And I'll congratulate the Hayes Chamber for the work they're doing with that. They're currently put together a group of people working on workforce as well. That workforce committee has opened my eyes to a few things that we need to understand about our community. But without everybody talking to each other and understanding the needs of the people that are coming into the community, I think we're very fortunate to have a really strong team of people at Grow Hayes that are working on economic development every day, both commercial and retail.
Thank you, candidate. And now we are going to move on to our next question. The first answer for this question will be from Sean Musel. The needs of local nonprofits continue to increase. What responsibility should the city have to support these organizations and how would you go about supporting those needs as a commissioner? Sean Musel?
Well, we need to continue to fund the local nonprofits that we do now. I would like to fund them more. I've said this for many years, but the problem is, if we do that, we're probably going to have to raise the mill levy. And that's a, that's a tough thing to ask the community to do something like that. But I think the local nonprofits, if you look around this town, that's kind of what runs this community. And I think we need to encourage the community to support them. The city continued to support what we've been doing. And, yeah, I mean, they're extremely important, but I don't know how we can give them more at this time.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Velasing. The needs of local nonprofits continue to increase. What responsibility should the city have to support these organizations and how would you go about supporting those needs as a commissioner? David Velasing?
Each one should be looked at by a case-by-case basis. They all have different needs and they all have different wants and we need to prioritize those appropriately. Ultimately, this city is very supportive. And those nonprofits, given the proper opportunities and the time, I have no doubt could rally the citizens of this town to help them raise the appropriate funds without having to put the burden on every single taxpayer. So I would encourage them to continue reaching out to the city and finding ways to bring the community together to help their cause.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. The needs of local nonprofits continue to increase. What responsibility should the city have to support these organizations and how would you go about supporting those needs as a commissioner? Reese Barrick?
One of the things that the city has done is we've created a care council and that looks at and takes a number of the nonprofits and works with them to figure out what their needs are and puts all of that together in what they are asking, what type of support they're asking for from the city. So it gets back again to the collaboration and working with a lot of these groups to understand and assess what they're going to need before they ask the support from the city. I think the support from the city then shows the rest of the community, you know, what our priorities are and what are the issues that the city has. And I think one of the things that's big in the city is that we have a next generation of people that are looking to see what the city needs and how to support it. We don't just have Bickles and Schmitz anymore to, to fund everything. And I think there's a next generation of stepping up and the city sort of shows with the nonprofits what the important needs are and we can get that in front of everyone.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you very much. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. The needs of local nonprofits continue to increase. What responsibility should the city have to support these organizations and how would you go about supporting those needs as a commissioner? Sandy Jacobs?
I have a phrase that people often hear from me and that phrase is, where do money come from? I think that's a, a thing we have to look at regularly. I think the nonprofits in our community are exemplary in the way they raise funds for themselves. They fundraise on their own, but sometimes it doesn't get quite there. I appreciate Mr. Barrick bringing up the Care Council. That, that council is funded through our alcohol tax. And I think there's 14 agencies maybe that are funded. And the group that awards those funds are residents and are your neighbors in this community looking on who can help. I believe we have a, a moral responsibility with many of, of the organizations. I believe we have a moral responsibility with many of, of the organizations. I also think there are huge quality of life issues. If we don't take care of each other, it's hard for anybody to look with good eyes on our community. But this is a great fundraising community and having been part of it for a whole lot of years, they're there to help.
Thank you, candidate. And now lastly, the same question for David Koschel. The needs of local nonprofits continue to increase. What responsibility should the city have to support these organizations? And how would you go about supporting those needs as a commissioner? David Koschel?
One of the things I love about my hometown is the size of my hometown. We're, we're a great, small, all-American town that's just big enough that we can look out for each other. I know that the city owes its residents the, the help that they might need. I think that if, if they're able to raise the money themselves through the community, then that's great. If, if the excess is needed, I feel like the city is able to and should step up to help these, these local nonprofits out.
Thank you, candidate. And we are now going to move on to the next question. I think we started with Sean Musel on that last one, right? Okay, I almost forgot my place. Next question here, the first answer will be from David Velasing. A couple of years ago, the Hayes City Commission voted unanimously to give themselves a $10,000 annual pay increase. Do you feel this was appropriate, given how many families in Hayes are struggling to put food on the table? David Velasing?
If the taxpayers were to come to me and say they want us to cut our salaries, I'd say cut it. I'd do this job for nothing. I can promise you, if they ever asked to raise that, I'll vote no. I'm not doing this for the money, I'm doing it for the people. I'm doing it for you. Was it appropriate for them to ask for it in the first place? I don't think it was necessary. And I think we could do without it.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Reese Barrick. A couple of years ago, this Hayes City Commission voted unanimously to give themselves a $10,000 annual pay increase. Do you feel this was appropriate, given how many families in Hayes are struggling to put food on the table? Reese Barrick?
All right, that's a, a very interesting question. And I think one of the things that, you know, any of us up here, when we either running now or when we first ran, did not run because there was going to be a large salary involved. And I think even when we were discussing whether to increase our salaries, I wasn't, that was not going to be an issue as far as whether I wanted to be a city commissioner. I would still do it for a lower amount of money. That's, the pay was more irrelevant. But the fact was, when you looked at what the city commissioners make compared to every other similar sized city, it was like miniscule and there hadn't been an increase in pay in like 20 years. So was it appropriate? Yes.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. A couple of years ago, the Hayes City Commission voted unanimously to give themselves a $10,000 annual pay increase. Do you feel this is appropriate, given how many families in Hayes are struggling to put food on the table? Sandy Jacobs?
Thank you. Actually, it was me that brought that issue to the table. And they, at the time, we were really looking to encourage other people to run. As everybody's saying up here tonight, it isn't about the money and we would run without it. And in fact, I did it twice. The, Mr. Barrick made the point that we're about middle of the road in the state of Kansas. I think that, I'm going to continue in hoping and encouraging young people. Sometimes that $1,000 makes a whole lot of difference in their, in their lifestyle and in their household. And if we can help with that, compared to everybody else, it's, it's a small amount. And I'm, I don't need it to be here, but I don't apologize for bringing it to the table.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Koschel. A couple of years ago, the Hayes City Commission voted unanimously to give themselves a $10,000 annual pay increase. Do you feel this was appropriate, given how many families in Hayes are struggling to put food on the table? David Koschel?
When I threw my name in the hat to run for city commission, I honestly had no idea there would be any pay involved. I do, I act with the Hayes Community Theater and that's what I'm relating this to because there's a lot of hours involved with putting on shows for the community. For the commission, there's a lot of hours involved to make sure that the city is running and, and running right for, for all of its citizens. I, I don't think that it's necessary for, for a, for a wage for city commission. However, I, I do see the, the positive aspect of encouraging more people to run for city commission, to maybe be involved with city government if there's, if there's a carrot at the end of the stick for it.
Thank you, candidate. And lastly, same question for Sean Musel. A couple of years ago, the Hayes City Commission voted unanimously to give themselves a $10,000 annual pay increase. Do you feel this was appropriate, given how many families in Hayes are struggling to put food on the table? Sean Musel?
I'm not sure giving yourself a raise is ever appropriate. I did vote for it. It was probably one of the most uncomfortable votes I ever did, but I, I know we put a lot of time in. You know, I don't know what each commissioner does, but there's sometimes you put a lot of hours, a lot of places you go, but you choose to do that also. So, and like the others, I would do this for free, but it is nice to be compensated and I don't think it's out of line. And if we would have had to raise taxes to do it, I would have been absolutely for it, but we didn't do it. So I, I guess I don't think it's ever appropriate to ever give yourself a raise, but you know, many people that talk to me didn't really have a problem with it. They just wish we would have done a little bit at a time. And I think that's something we probably should have did 20 years ago.
Thank you, candidate. We're going to do one more question and then closing remarks. For this question, our first answer will come from Reese Barrick. What can the city commission do to address the problem of domestic violence in this community? Reese Barrick?
It's one of the things that, that I always have a, have a bit of a passion for because it is an issue that shouldn't be as big as it is. I think we've seen the tragic things that happen with domestic violence. And there's a lot of reasons for domestic violence. I think some of the things that exacerbate it are going to be economics. And I think increasing the, the economics so that there's less stress and pressure on couples is going to be important. But we also have to, to support the, the groups that, like Options and Janus Campaign that support people and that are in search of safety from domestic violence. And I think these are going to be really important. And I think we can also fund.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you very much. And now the same question for Sandy Jacobs. What can the city commission do to address the problem of domestic violence in this community? Sandy Jacobs?
Mr. Barrick brought up some really good points. We have great agencies in this community that work to help us with this issue. Janus Campaign, Options. Economics is certainly the issue as is alcohol and drugs. High Plains Mental Health is here to help as well. I think education is the most important thing that we can do, starting from when we're young. We talk about how well-educated our young people in our schools are about the water issues in Hayes. And if you want to make sure that something gets done right, tell the third grader to go home and handle it in their family. And I think there's an education process. And I'm not, I'm not the person to do it. I'm not educated to do it, but I know the people in this community that are. And I think we need to start at the bottom and educate, educate, educate.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for David Koschel. What can the city commission do to address the problem of domestic violence in this community? David Koschel?
What a question. It's an issue that definitely needs as much help and support as we can give it. As the city commission, as the residents of Hayes, as friends, family, neighbors, we need to, to be there for each other. We need to be more accountable to each other. We need to hold each other more accountable. We need to make sure that, that the education is there, that, that people know that there are options, not just the, the group, but there are options out there for people in, in domestic violence situations. And maybe part of that starts with meeting our neighbors, meeting more people in our community, knowing our neighbors, knowing their situations a little bit more. We just need to do more for each other in our community.
Thank you, candidate. And now the same question for Sean Musel. What can the city commission do to address the problem of domestic violence in this community? Sean Musel?
Well, this is personal for my family. My mother-in-law's kind of lived her life supporting the education of domestic violence. I kind of agree with what everybody has said is I think we need to educate, educate, educate. Need to be there for people. We need to look at mental health. I mean, I know it seems like we always talk about it, but are we really helping it? Yeah, it's ridiculous how much this has became. It seems like it's just normal and it's not normal. We need to do everything possible to educate at a young age and it's never okay for domestic violence.
Thank you, candidate. And now lastly, the same question for David Velasing. What can the city commission do to address the problem of domestic violence in this community? David Velasing?
One word, accountability. As a police officer, I've arrested more people than I would ever care to for domestic violence or related crimes that would be flagged with or for domestic violence. And I very rarely ever had to go to court or to testify in those cases because they're all pled out in advance or dismissed or never seen through and the person is not held accountable. We need to advocate to make sure our prosecutors and our judges are doing what they need to do and holding those people accountable.
Thank you, candidate. And that is done with our questions. We're going to move on to closing remarks. You have 60 seconds for your closing remarks. We're going to begin with Sandy Jacobs. Closing remarks for Sandy Jacobs.
Thank you. I believe deeply in servant leadership, that holding public office is above all about serving others. It means listening with respect, acting with integrity, and always putting the needs of our communities first. Given the tragic events of the last week, I am more committed to service than I've ever been. During my time on the commission, I've worked to be a consensus builder, someone who brings people together, finds common ground, and focuses on practical solutions that move Hayes forward. The best outcomes come when we listen to one another and work as collaborators, not competitors. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together, from progress in housing and infrastructure to strengthening our local economy and quality of life. But there's more work ahead and I'm ready to keep building on that momentum. I'm grateful for your trust, for your partnership, and for the chance to continue serving this community that I love. I would sincerely appreciate your vote on November 4th.
Thank you, candidate. And now closing remarks from David Koschel.
My hometown deserves everyone's voice to be heard. My hometown deserves people from all walks of life to be able to, to make their voice heard in all avenues, in different venues, in the city meetings. One of the things that I'm, that I'm running for is more engagement with the community. I want people that, that work my line of work, work as a plumber, work as an HVAC technician, work as a cashier somewhere. I want them to know that they're able to throw their name into the hat and, and to be a voice in the community for their neighbors, for their friends. I want to build a city that we can all be proud of, no matter if we're making minimum wage or if we're making six figures. I'd appreciate your vote on November 4th. My name is David Kojak Koschel.
Thank you, candidate. And now closing remarks from Sean Musel.
I'd just like to thank all my friends and family that came out to support tonight and all the voters that came out and the millions at home watching us. I just want to, I love being part of this community and I guarantee I will work as hard as I can. We're going to get, we're going to get that R9 water up here. It may not, it may not be flowing time I get off here, but we are so close to being up here. And guys, I think it's going to be some generational thing for our community. And it's just something that I'm very, I just want it so bad because I know what it's going to do for not only my kids, my grandkids. And I just hope you'll give me the chance to, to just support this community one more time because I love this community. I love raising my kids here. And thank you for coming out and vote for Sean Musel on November 4th.
Thank you, candidate. And now closing remarks from David Velasing.
I want to say thank you to everybody for giving me this opportunity. I have a vision for the city of Hayes and that's to empower the preservation and sustainability of our resources while building a future of opportunity for our hometown. Now, I hope that you can accept this challenge. Help me keep thinking critically while we find safe ways to inspire hope in this community that we can get out of this fixed mindset into a growth mindset and find those opportunities that this city needs and inspire some hope and change. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. And now closing remarks from Reese Barrick.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates for putting yourself forward to serve Hayes in such a public leadership position. Without everyone here, there is no choice or no democratic process. Setting priorities for Hayes is vital to maintaining our high quality of life. Yet it comes with the benefit of working with very highly knowledgeable and talented people across the city who are focused on making Hayes the best place to live in Kansas. It can be stressful, but also can be fun with many lighthearted moments. It's not just budgets, but also providing a voice for concerns and the wishes of any Hayes citizen. We're so close to finalizing water security for the next 75 years with the R9 and with it, our capability to grow. We have great new innovators that have kick-started housing, which is going to allow us to grow and bring new families into our community. These successes will lead to the recruitment of new businesses. I would like to become, continue to be a part of making Hayes the success story of economic growth and quality of life.
Time's up, candidate. Thank you so much. And now that we've heard from closing remarks from all of our candidates, I want to remind you of a few things. November 4th is election day. Please go on and vote. Every vote matters. For the city commission, there are nine candidates. You can vote for two for four-year terms and one for a two-year term. For the board of education, there are five candidates available and there are three positions that you can vote for and those are four-year terms. Thank you all for coming out and we appreciate all the candidates and the questions asked from the audience and for those millions watching out there. Thank you very much and have a good night.